Alright y'all, we are tuning in to uh Trip House Politics 101. I got Anna London here, I got the infamous, I don't even know who this lady is.
Who are you?
She is, come here. You need to come over here, I don't know what you got going on. But the purpose of this is um, we're having like girls conversation and I got Anna here, I want her to one, tell about her platform, um why she's running, a lot of people um is curious to like, you know, everybody knows that she's with Charlotte Works, you know, and they just wanna know like what, what made you want to run for CMS? I will let her take the floor and she can tell you her platform and why she's running.
Yes, so thank you um for being willing to chat with me, both of you want to get it together over here?
Correct.
So, most people know me as a community leader and know me um as working at Charlotte Works and leading workforce development in Charlotte Mecklenburg and I will continue to do that, I'm still doing that and I will continue to do it. But, so what made me, uh I think that the key question is, or the question of the day is, what made me want to run? So, I know that it sounds very cliche, um but education has always been extremely important to me. So I believe that uh public schools, our K through 12, our school system, um and education really is a pathway to prosperity, a pathway out of poverty and is really the core foundation for preparing our youth, K through 12, so ages four to eighteen years old, um providing them with access to opportunity. So my platform is, or my slogan is, the bridge to a better CMS, so London.
I like bridges.
Okay, London Bridge, I heard it, alright, yes.
Yes, Burgy.
I like that.
Yes.
You heard it.
Yep, so a bridge to a better CMS.
Okay.
I believe that, you know, we really need to focus on, so I have multiple kind of bullet points that are part of my platform, however.
Tell them, hey, we're open to it.
Yeah.
Um but the big question before we get so deep.
Yes.
I wanna know, you can ask her, you don't have to ask her.
Okay.
But it was brought to my attention and it kinda bothered me and I was, didn't really figure out, and I was trying to, just trying to wrap my mind around it and my head around the fact that um an elected official asked you, did the African-American community ask you to run? I'm just confused with that, how did that make you feel? Uh with all the stuff that you do, being um, you know, out in the community, you're doing the things that you do with Charlotte Works and you come across a lot of different people from reentry and you help a lot of different people, um regardless of the color. But how did that make you feel, um being asked that question?
Yeah, so, you know, initially I think I was kinda shocked, um you know, I, I will say that I guess I'm known as, you know, obviously I'm a white woman, but I am very, well I'm saying I'm
I didn't even know. I didn't know, I'm colorblind.
That's what people say.
But I am. I'm colorblind. Okay.
There you go, yeah, so it, it shocked me at first and it was really interesting and I had to pause and kinda sit with that for a second because I am, I am someone who believes in doing what's right and justice for all people. So black, brown, white, whoever, I believe in providing access to opportunity for all walks of life. And I have relationships in, in all communities and with people from all backgrounds and all walks of life and this is just who I am authentically, like I am who I am, you all have known me for a long time, you've known me forever.
And I can say that, I mean, she has been, it has not been about color at no time and Anna's been doing this work for years, even before Charlotte Works, um and there has not ever been an issue that I know of as far as speaking of color, so yeah, that really kinda took me back as well.
You know what? But it made me think for a second, wow, people must see in me that I have genuine and authentic relationships across differences and with black and brown people. And so people must be paying attention for good and not so productive reasons.
Right.
And, but for me, it's like I'm just being who I am all day every day, like Nico called me, you know, whenever she first heard that I was running.
Yeah.
And I answered and she said, you know, you've always answered, like you've always been available, you've always been accessible, no matter what I was coming to you with.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's complaints, sometimes it's, you know, these providers ain't nothing, I think this is terrible. But I do answer and I do respond because I do really care and it has nothing to do with race. Um but I do understand that, you know, and especially in, I'll say, you know, going back to the school board, back to District 6, that is a very diverse community and so when you look at District 6 and the schools that are in District 6, we have, um you know, on the makeup of the schools, we've got schools that are in the top 100 in North Carolina for high performance and we've got schools that are considered the lowest 100 in the state. And so District 6 has, um you know, District 6 has a very diverse uh constituent makeup or student makeup and the schools are very diverse, which is interesting. And so I think in District 6, it's really, really important to have relationships, be accessible, have relationships, be attentive across differences with people that don't live or look like me. Um and you know, you've got, we've got very high performing schools with um students who have parents or caregivers that have the capacity and the ability to be actively engaged. We also have schools where students could, you know, have parents or caregivers that are working multiple jobs and don't have as much capacity or opportunity to be as actively engaged. And so I think it's really important to, you know, be transparent, communicate as much as possible, be transparent across the entire district and find ways to meet people where they are so that parents feel like they're a partner to their students' education and it doesn't matter race, it doesn't matter color, it doesn't matter background, it's just, you know, being real, being human, seeing other people as real and human too.
Being people.
People, yes, all people and so, um you know, and some parents or caregivers, um you know, have one set of concerns and challenges where another set of parents have a totally different set of concerns and challenges. And so I know that it's a balance to juggle all of that and navigate that, um you know, while being available and still having to be careful and be, you know, it is a, it's a local elected seat, but and it's interesting to, um I believe, I would say, I believe that the school board, maybe this is not a popular thing to say, but I really do believe this and it's not because I'm running, I think the school board is the most important elected body in a city or county. Because we are making decisions about our current children and the future of our children, um and
Producing leaders.
Yes.
Because what you pour in a child is what you're gonna get and so schools have gotten, so to me, have, it's not the same when we were growing up. You had more teachers that really took the time to invest in kids, um from, hey, I'm gonna stay after school for maybe two hours, if you got some homework, you wanna even retake a test, you had teachers that really invested in kids' growth, yes, with anything and then you had teachers that really knew the difference when the child had something going on in the household.
Yeah.
We, prime example, me and Camille, we was over at Harding. And when we was over there at Harding, the problem that we had at Harding, we seen the teacher, she was not even, she was so unbothered, two kids back in the back aisle, smooching and poaching. Basically, and the teacher, she was just like this phone in her hand, she wasn't, but she was unbothered. So when you looking at the performance of your child and you wonder why the grades are dropping or you wonder if anybody's academically challenging your child, you running that problem, you got a teacher that don't care. And I think that is a big problem when you have a school board and a lot of times, and it's, and it's the teachers, but they also afraid when you contact the board, they don't like you to contact the board. And I feel like everybody, if you know the representative that's for your school, you need to contact them because that teacher and that principal, you not finding what you need because being, when you advocate too hard for your child, you are a problem.
Yeah, and that's the problem, being a problem.
Being a problem is a problem.
You have to have your head.
So I will say, so a couple of my, kind of, um on my campaign, like a few of my, what's really important to me is, and it, you know, I'm sure it's no shock, making sure that learning connects and relates to real life.
Hello, everybody.
So learning connects to real life and preparing students for after graduation, not just preparing for a test or just preparing for graduation, it is really important that we are, you know, teaching students, empowering and equipping them um with the foundational skills that they will need in order to make decisions in middle and high school around what their career pathway might be, you know, um currently, you know, well CMS launched a couple of years ago under the new superintendent, making sure that every student graduates one of the three E's. So enrolled in post-secondary, enlisted in military and/or employed at graduation. And so, you know, I believe that it is really, really important not to stay so focused on only the technical skills in K through 12, but really focus on those foundational skills, problem solving, communication, conflict resolution, navigating uncertainty. Because with the way that technology is going today, um jobs, careers and the skills that are needed are changing hourly and overnight because of technology, because of AI, because of automation. And so I really believe that it's really important that we really are preparing our students for life after graduation, not just for graduation. Another thing is going back to, you know, kind of the teacher part and the parent part is nurturing a safe environment for students, obviously, for educators, and when I say educators, I don't just mean teachers, I mean anyone and everyone that works inside of the school system, the bus drivers, the teachers, the counselors, the nurses, everyone, administration. So, you know, nurturing a safe um environment and equipping, empowering teachers, educators, um for what they need in the classroom to best prepare the students, but then also to make sure that parents or caregivers feel like and have the access and the opportunity to truly be a partner in their child or their students' education. And, you know, I know that a lot of um one key, you know, challenge that or question that I get or concern I get often is, is communication, so.
Oh God, it's bad and it's good.
That communication is, you know, parents' biggest concern and so um I'm, I'm hesitant to call things challenges just because I'm a person that believes in opportunity and so I think there's an opportunity for us to look at, what is the current education platform that is used, what is the current process, the current protocol? Is it across the entire district? If not, you know, let's really look at, um you know, going into the spring or next year, let's look at making sure that there is a, um a protocol that is district-wide, that you can't always communicate everything, all the details about everything with parents, but I do think it's important to communicate what you can. That's something I've learned on my own leadership journey. Um and I'll say just right now, you know, in this political climate, there are so many changes coming down every single day that
Like literally every day.
Every day, every single day.
They are.
Yeah, or an executive order that comes at five o'clock, that we have to read and say, what do I do with this? And so in those moments, I don't have all the answers, our school system doesn't, probably doesn't have all the answers because we see what the public is seeing. But we can communicate and share what we do know or what we are doing about that. Like, hey, I'm aware of this, I'm informing you that I'm aware, here's what I'm doing to be as proactive as possible, but at least communicating, communicating, even if you can't share all the details about something.
How do you feel like you would be most effective when you win the seat?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say school board member.
Yeah, so, you know, a few of the things that I'll say set me apart, but a few of the things that I have that I would say are my strengths or, you know, positive productive things that I bring to this seat is, number one, business acumen. So I am a leader, I lead an organization, I do have business acumen, I manage a board of directors, but I also report to that board of directors.
So can, let's start right there, so when you say you manage your organization, can you give clarity to the organization and can you define the board?
Sure, yes, so I lead Charlotte Works, the Workforce Development Board and I have a twenty-four, twenty-five member Board of Directors that is highly regulated. Camille knows all of this, um so it's highly, highly regulated. We have to navigate rules, regulations, goals, outcomes and guardrails that we can't move outside of.
Right.
Um it's, you know, we're federally authorized and so very similar to a public school system. There are a lot of rules and regulations, there's a lot of requirements. The team, the superintendent and their team is responsible for the day-to-day operations. The board is responsible for policy and oversight and a strategic plan for the system. In my position, Charlotte Works is a much smaller organization than our public school system, but it's, it's similar. So I manage a board of directors, but I also report to that board of directors. And same thing, my, myself and my team, so the board is responsible for hiring and firing this president and CEO and they're responsible for the policy, the governance and the oversight. But myself and my team, we're responsible for execution and implementation and the daily operations. And so I understand that from a leadership perspective because I do that at Charlotte Works in my role as the CEO.
And, and just say, um you just didn't pop up in this row.
No.
You grew up in the row.
Yes, sure.
So for people that may or may not know what Charlotte Works is, can you tell them a little bit, what, go up under Charlotte Works?
Sure, yep, so we are responsible for the public, I'll say, public workforce system. So many people that may be watching, uh many people may know Charlotte Works as um overseeing youth programs, so the NC Works Next Gen Youth Programs, In-School Youth and Out-of-School Youth and the NC Works Career Center. So for anyone that has been laid off or looking for employment or better employment, so anyone that's unemployed, underemployed, looking to transition, seeking training scholarships or support just on their job search journey, NC Works is a part of our portfolio. So I oversee, my team and I oversee NC Works. Um so all things workforce development from a direct service standpoint, all things NC Works Youth and Young Adult Programs and um workforce development, direct services in Charlotte Mecklenburg. Now from a workforce board perspective, I serve as the leader of workforce for Charlotte Mecklenburg. So I work alongside um local government, so the city, the county, business, so Charlotte Executive Leadership Council, economic development, um as well as other businesses, I already work alongside K through 12, CMS, Public Education because it is so important that we're actually preparing and equipping our students for today and tomorrow's jobs. They are our future workforce and we would love for them to graduate high school um with a degree and a credential that matters that they could go straight to work here locally or go off to college and come back and work here locally. We want people to graduate here and come back and work here and live here. Um and make sure that, you know, we're providing access to all students, no matter their zip code, to be prepared for the amazing opportunities that are coming into Charlotte Mecklenburg. We know that Charlotte Mecklenburg is a tale of two cities where there's, you know, opportunity and then limited opportunity. And I strive every single day to change that narrative and make sure that no matter the zip code, youth, young adults and adults have access to options and opportunities. So I work alongside all of those key partners, so K through 12, um higher education, post-secondary, community-based organizations, the city, the county, economic development, the alliance, the employment, everyone under the umbrella of Department of Commerce and Department of Labor to lead those efforts here in Charlotte Mecklenburg. Um so to the point of the question, so I've worked at Charlotte Works for eleven years. I'm a millennial that has worked at this any place for a really long time.
That's right, okay.
I was a baby.
Yeah.
Someone say that part because the lack of, the lack in, what is it, the lack in the CMS at the moment, so it's a lack.
So if they can elaborate, that would be great.
That's a lot.
And then you say the lack, it's a lack at the, at the moment in CMS.
Give the opportunity as if it's a different vote.
Cause it came in right when you were talking, so whatever it is, they chimed in on what you were saying and they said that they pretty much they agree with what you're doing because they like that part, because there is a lack in CMS.
Could be access to opportunity.
Could be, yeah, to bridge in the gap, so in reality, you're not really far with CMS because you work closely with them.
Yes.
And they do have job fair, so it do make sense that you would wanna tap into that.
And I will say too, right now, another thing that I bring to the
What about you on a personal, like if people wanna know, who am I here?
Yes.
Yeah, who are you?
Yes.
You know, there's always the buzz, people always wanna make sure nobody know, visit or trying to just run, so you heard what she said, eleven years with Charlotte Works, okay? So, you know, just back history, you know, cause sometimes people, it's a lot of people that move, transition, be here for two, three years and they go just to take off running and then they wanna take adoptive, you know.
Yeah, okay.
A little bit back behind you.
Yep, so I will share and then I will also say, go to my website, um because I do share my why um on my website. So there's a whole section, my why on, and it's www.londonforeducation.com, so please go and read that, but I will share. So I grew up in this community, I'm a proud product of Charlotte Mecklenburg. Um I graduated from, I did not graduate from Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, I graduated from Cabarrus County Schools and, um but I left, I graduated from Cabarrus County Schools, went to college and went to UNCG in Greensboro for one semester. And I was, and so I'll kinda share a little bit more information, but I went to UNCG for one semester, left and came right back and went to UNC Charlotte, so I've literally only not lived in Charlotte Mecklenburg or Concord, North Charlotte for one semester. So I, so growing up, I, um my parents divorced when I was in elementary school, I think I was in kindergarten. Um my mom struggled with extreme mental health issues, my biological mom struggled with extreme mental health issues and my dad owned a business, he owned a heating and air conditioning business on North Tryon Street, so in North Charlotte. So when they separated and divorced, um my dad went to North Charlotte and my mom stayed in um Cabarrus County. Um ultimately, when I was in fifth grade, my brother and I, my dad ended up getting custody of us and we moved back to Concord, my dad ended up coming back from North Charlotte to Concord. And so um his business was in North Charlotte, my, he remarried, my stepmom's family was in Charlotte. And so I grew up, so what you'll hear me say is, I'm a proud product of this community and this environment, but I really grew up in North Charlotte and Concord, back when, you know.
The communities that they wanna run from, so you was back when North Charlotte was North Charlotte.
It was North Charlotte.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not the new North Charlotte.
It was not, there was no, like all of the stuff that's there now.
Right.
And you could literally
Seen the change.
I've seen the change, you could literally get on twenty-nine in Concord and go all the way uptown in thirty minutes.
I remember, huh, it take one plus to be in East Lamont.
Not anymore, I like to go to East Lamont those days.
Yes, I think, yes.
Yes, so this is where I grew up, um this is where I was, you know, born and raised and I am the product, so I mentioned it, but um I'm very passionate about reentry, I'm very passionate about behavioral health, I'm very passionate about making sure that students have access again to services, but also opportunity. Um you know, you would never know it by looking at me, but, and people tell me I need to share this more often. Um if you're familiar with ACE scores, so the Adverse Childhood Effect, I'm a ten out of ten.
Okay.
So I'm a ten out of ten, um but because I did have a strong uh education and support system and mentors, my teachers were my, um my schools, my teachers were my safe space. I changed elementary schools, I think five or six times in elementary school because my mom struggled with mental health. And so I know, but I experienced it still from a place of privilege.
Right.
And so, but I remember what it was like to be homeless, couch surfing, living with my grandparents, in and out, living in motels and changing schools and my teacher was my safe space. And so having to leave that, but thank God, you know, I had grandparents and, and um family members who were able to provide and provide safety and stability for me. But I, so now today, you know, I can hear about, you know, the five thousand plus students in CMS that are experiencing homelessness or housing instability and the K and N student. I also, I worked at my, I started my journey um right after college, teaching pre-K and um then at the relatives. And so I worked in crisis intervention and behavioral health, but that's also my journey and my story. So I can relate, but I also acknowledge
The trauma around, you're able to overcome.
Yes.
You still have traumas, but I mean, you're able to work and identify what a lot of our students
Yeah, but I also acknowledge that I, I still experienced it from a place of privilege. And so even though it was hard and thank God I've been able to turn, you know, my pain into purpose and I really feel like, like for this for me is really purpose work.
So if it's something that somebody wanted to take away from your messaging,
Yeah.
what is it that you want them to take, to take away from your message? What is it that you want them to really see? What makes you different from what is currently there and what real growth and change that you wanna bring?
Yes, so
That was a lot.
It's okay, yeah, yeah, it's okay. I would say, you know, I am who I am, like what you see is what you get, whether we're here at Pauline's T-Bar.
That's right.
Or we are at a community event, at a YMCA or some
Charlotte Works.
Or at Charlotte Works, like if you walk into our career center or my office, I am the same person anywhere I go. And, yeah, um so I, I would say that, I am also, um I'm a proven, I am a proven leader.
I can attest to that.
I have relationships
I can too.
At the state level, at the governor's office and at the federal level. And I already, you know, um go and advocate and, and, and I think, you know, right now, all of our elected bodies, but definitely this school board, we need leaders who make themselves proximate, available, strong leaders who are willing to be bold and willing to fight for our students, and I mean all students.
That's right.
And so that's what I bring to this, I bring, you know, that experience, that type of leadership. Um and I really do, you know, I believe in making sure that we're preparing students for life after graduation. I am definitely a person that believes in accountability, you all know that too.
Yes.
So, you know, I'm data-driven, data-informed accountability. And so I love that our school system is already moving, you know, in that direction around goals and guardrails because I believe in data-informed, data-driven accountability, um but making sure that we have safe nurturing environments for our students, our educators and for parents to be partners. And I want people to vote for me.
That's right.
That's right.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know how you felt about, I'm sure you remember about the trades that used to be in schools.
Yes.
And how that changed significantly with our student population. A lot of kids were still in school just because, just for the trades. And now we don't have um any trades up in schools. What's your take on that, getting trades back in school or is that something you can, you know, proceed that you won't get again? It made a huge difference.
It did, so I think that, you know, over the last few years, um they do have academies and there are trades back in the schools, I do think there's opportunity though, you know, there was a time and a season, and I didn't agree with this, but there were, and I think it was being shouted in specific communities that college is not for everyone.
Right, right, right.
When really that's not how we need to communicate that.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that, you know, what Dr. Hill has done with making sure that all students graduate with a plan and a pathway for one of those three E's. So that supports skills, skilled trades being in schools, like we, students, students who are interested in that should be able to take specific courses and classes and exams in high school and graduate with not only their high school diploma, but a credential to be able to go straight to work. And so I, I think that, you know, the direction, over the last few years and the direction that the school system has already started to go in really supports that, so instead of any type of verbiage or narrative around, you go to college, but you don't. No, it's the three E's, so every student should be prepared to enroll in post-secondary, enlist in the military and/or be employed at graduation. And that's something that my team and I have really been able to support is the employment piece. So bringing employers to the table to say, hey, you have all of these positions, I'll say the city of Charlotte is, is a perfect example. They have positions that only They have positions that only require a high school diploma and you just have to be eighteen. And so, last year, our city manager Marcus Jones made a commitment to myself, my board chair. And our previous CEO Danielle in a meeting, right before Christmas, I'll never forget it, it was like December twenty first, but. He said, I'll make a commitment to hire students right out of high school, they hired seventeen students right out of high school. This past year, twenty-five students right out of high school, back in June, and their starting salary was like forty-six thousand dollars.
That's the way it should be.
That's the way it should be, and so.
But I, I'm told for me with that, though, how do we get that information out to the kids? Because a lot of people might not know that they're hiring, cause when they think of the city, the first thing they think about, I don't wanna drive an garbage truck. So, you know, how do we really get them to, right, but they just think. That's what's always associated in there, if they feel like, well, I got a worker, so, you know, is that all I can get? And most of the time, just I already put them on.
And that's not fair, so that's where the counselors are very important, they should have a.
Yep.
They should have a relationship with those, with those counselors, to not, and even if they have a record while they're in high school, most of the time, look for my clients, a lot of times. But those records are sealed.
Exactly.
And so, can't see them, so they're again, their counselor, along with their parents, you can't put everything on the education system as well, start at home. But to know that they have communication that's being communicated to them by the teachers, of course, the people that they see up close that. You know, let's prepare you to do one of the three E's, whichever one it is that you want, you know, everybody doesn't wanna go to college, everybody doesn't wanna go to the military, cause when they think about the military, they think about war.
Yes.
That's only maybe, but not physically going to war, and if you live down here now, these days, you're going to war. Already at war. That's gotta be, you know, that's, that's gotta be put in them.
Yeah, I think that's another opportunity too, though, is bringing, you know, the city of Charlotte is an amazing best practice. An example of that, but I think that's an opportunity to continue to bring more employers into that. Um, you know, three E's partnership, and you know what is really cool, and the city did this, is a signing day. So just like you have a signing day for the military, or signing day for college, they did signing day, and the department leads. First of all, Marcus Jones himself was there, the city manager, but then the department leads and supervisors were there. And the stu-, they put the hats on the students at West Charlotte High School, and they signed their kind of code of conduct, so they had a signing day.
I think that's cool, and that should've been publicized.
Yeah. See, so that's an opportunity.
So it's a lack of resources, I think it's a lot of the information that's not being provided, and it's almost like strategic. It is like, we only want this group. So it's like a limitation of information.
With the grades or the status.
Right, so when you're looking at this group, this is the one wanna push it out, so you wanna get it to this group, but not everybody, but then we can talk about crime. But you can't talk about crime reduction if you don't have no avenue or no outlet, or you don't have no resources that's really being provided.
Something to look forward to, or to understand, because they start recruiting in the schools in the fall. And so these students know, oh my gosh, starting June eighth, or, you know, not June eighth, but July eighth. I have a job at the city making forty-six thousand dollars a year, forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right.
I will say it, it's opportunity, however, it needs to be shared more broadly.
Right.
And we need to add more businesses into the fold, because the city has done an incredible job. But, you know, on any given year, they may hire twenty-five students, think about how many students we have graduating, so. Bringing in more employers, so that it could be, you know, that could be a really cool, like, community campaign.
Go like back in the day, so you remember when kids would get, before school got out, the first two to three weeks? Remember the news station, they have a telethon, have all the numbers of everything, and they'll talk about it, they don't even do that no more, they. It was always like, you got car washes, your phone things, you had all those different, and you'll literally see people either calling and saying they wanna be a part of it. So they'll say, we just got somebody else wanna be a part of it, and then we gonna fly a call.
And sometimes it was like similar jobs.
Right, but they, they don't even have that, so you like. Park and Ray got a little opportunity. But they pick up so quick, and then a lot of people don't know that they can apply for Park and Ray. And then if they stay with it as a, as a youth, eventually you can go to a re-, a city job, if it's still a county job, but you can go somewhere else. But it's like a lot of things like this that they take away from people, and it's like strategic, so when I think about a mobility plan. And I hear a lot of people talking about, let's talk about open mobility, open mobility, when I hear that, it seems like it's almost to mobilize. To strategically get a certain class, a group of people according to their color, skin, up out. So, we need to come up with a strategic plan, so with you doing a lot of things with reentry people. You do a lot of things with reentry people, and we looking at the bus shortage. I think that it should be something that the city should really connect with y'all. And look at the fact of maybe like second just bus drivers, as long as they don't have nothing that's hurting a child. Cause you know, we talk about reentry all day, we talk about there's a shortage of bus drivers. But you wanna restrict certain things, and I'm like, okay, now they got reckless driver, okay, yeah, you gotta D U out, obviously not.
Or a record that's thirty years old.
Right, but even that, but even a speeding ticket, now it depend on how long that speeding ticket is. We all know sometime these police officers don't really clock, they just write. So it's like, I think it's like certain stuff they need a way out the lesson to the good, because if you got kids that are standing bus stop wrong, big heavy drop zones. Shortage in drivers, you need to do a reevaluation, because if you can put that person on a job at the county or the city. Or they can go somewhere else and work, why not give them a bus job?
Yeah.
You know, even if it's a program, and you go through this particular company, we don't, we, you can get bonded.
Yeah, yeah.
For some, certain jobs, some people, they come on, they're like, well, I don't know, you have to get a bond, you have to get bonded for yourself to get a job, why not the same thing?
Or they like the work opportunity tax credit, I think, yeah, that's a really good idea, and something to definitely explore.
Yeah, I mean, they should, you wouldn't have a shortage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that, you know, going back to that point though, about, you know, preparing students. And making sure that they have access, I think that could be a really, really, um, I think, you know. Dr. Hill has, has, and team, her team, have been building off of like a three E's platform. And so I can only imagine, you know, that it would continue to grow and making sure, but to y'all's point. It's, you know, one thing to make sure that the students here in the schools, we've gotta find ways to make sure that their parents are also hearing it. Um, and for parents to understand what comes with that job, so. Because you could hear, oh, the city, but if they automatically think, you know, solid waste service girls driving a garbage truck.
They're throwing off.
They're throwing them off, there's a lot of opportunities.
But they don't know, where is it at?
Exactly.
You got, some people might like communications, you like people like public relations, you might like somebody that wanna do other.
Three-one-one, like that's the city, yeah.
How they gonna know about?
So I think that's an opportunity to do some type of.
Even medics.
Yeah, as we continue to build off of this, like the dispatchers, as we continue to build on this. Really doing a community-wide campaign that we all participate in. Cause it's important for y'all to know these things too, and the work that you do. Yeah.
So we can help push it out, so I'm wondering is, when they do the, um, the calls out to the people, when, well, I know Avon Road did it. But when they do the different calls, uh, kinda like, I call it on, on-call or whatever, but they send it through the phone. So like calling posts, we have a calling post at, at M C O E that we send out for its functions. So that's something that can go on the calling post if they have a stack. That the parents should be listening, whatever, someone is listening, so whatever's going on in that school besides. Like, I know that one particular school does it, but all the schools.
Yeah.
So, at least you're getting it, and if you choose not to answer the phone, which you can see, people don't answer the phone, but it's there. And calling posts and the texts can go out, so if you using those avenues, you can't say you didn't get it, or, you know, you need to make sure you keep your phone number updated. But that's the way too, that's the way too.
True.
Yeah.
So, I mean, assuming if you wanna be that little kid on the block. I mean, some innovative, some innovative, you know, change, I think it's always good, and I. You know, for me, I always feel like, you know, sometimes we get too comfortable with the same faces. And we already know sometimes the same faces is really not doing us no good, and we be afraid of a new face. And I just charge people this year to really stop monopolizing on their votes, because your vote is like money.
Yes.
And your vote count, and if a person tell you that your vote don't count, they're only telling you that because they only want you to not vote. And misinformation, if you don't know, it's so many different outlets, they can tell a person how to find someone to go really do their own research.
Yes, yes.
So, it's, just don't go with somebody who's saying, and, and I think the big problem is too, sometimes it's like, well, this is my alumni, sorority. So, you know, all these different layers, yeah, so it's like, this certain type of connection that. Well, this, I'm gonna give it to them because that's according to whatever, and you know that person's not really a good fit. So we have to start really looking strategically, like, what's gonna be the greater good? Because now you got kids on the, on the corner, on the block, you feel what I'm saying, they need to wonder why they're out there, like. What have you gave them differently, and half the time, local turnout is because they're kind of seeing the same faces. And when they sit back and they see the same face, like, I'm not, I'm not doing that, and if you get another candidate, it's not strong, that is a problem. Politics is like a comedy show, it, it's like, because some of the people, you know, that run, it makes it where people be like, that's what we got? So as they looking at, we got this and we got that, I'm not voting at all, so the numbers are like this. Yeah.
Oh, I heard that too, yeah.
And so, how do we, how do you change that perception, so a person can say, I'm gonna trust Anna Lund, I'm gonna cast that vote, I want her.
Yes, so, definitely do your research, um, go on my website and.
And your website would be?
W W W dot London for education dot com, um, you can look at my social media, um, London for Education. I've got some videos on there of me just answering certain questions, I am also launching something called London Listens. Where, and actually right now, it's on my Instagram, I think, where you can, on my story, go in and, and share like a question, a comment. Feedback, your concerns, you know, opportunities, whatever that is. So that I can hear directly from residents, you know, and, and even though, I will say, like, obviously, only District Six can vote for me. Um, and District Six is, so I also encourage you, you know, if you haven't already, go and figure out your district. So that you know exactly who, who you can vote for, and, you know, look at a sample ballot, so you can do your research on every single seat. Because your vote does matter, like they said, um, but, you know, only District Six can vote for me. So it is Lower Still Creek, Palisades, over to a little bit of Nations Ford, Pineville, and then Valentine. So it's kind of the, it's the southernmost part of Mecklenburg County, so Lower Still Creek, a section of Nations Ford. Palisades, Pineville, Valentine, so that's District Six, and while, you know, only District Six residents can vote for me. There are other ways that, you know, that people could support, um, you know, you may know people that live in District Six, you may want to volunteer. I would love to have, you know, more volunteers, but I say all of that really to say, the district seats. You know, you represent the school board members, and for that matter, any local elected official that represents a district. You represent that district, and that's the district that voted you in, but when you sit on that board and you're making decisions. You're making decisions for the entire district, not just the area you live in, no. I don't, you know, I wouldn't be just voting on things that impact District Six, like I would be voting on things that impact. All of our students and educators and families, so, um, my commitment is. I mean, it's who I am, it's what I've been, you know, currently as a leader, my commitment is to stay engaged and involved. I, and, you know, you've probably heard me hear this before, I build with and not for. So I don't build for people, I build with, and so, anything and everything, as much as possible, I build with, and so. You know, I need to hear from you and know what's happening and what's going on, your questions, your concerns, and so I'm starting something called London Listens. And like I said, it's on social media, but I do plan to do this right now, um, I'm gathering questions, concerns, feedback. And then I will do a video this weekend, answering all of those questions, and I may do it on live, or it may just be a recorded video that's published. But I'm going to do that in person as well, and so, you know, throughout the next ninety days, or, you know, three months. I will be doing in-person, out in the community, London Listens, where parents, residents, anyone can come and share with me. Ask me questions, share their concerns, give feedback, and then, you know, if I become, you know, the District Six, when I become the District Six.
Thank you for changing that.
When I become the District Six Board Member, I plan to do that in the district often and consistently. So, you know, right now, I would love to say I'll do it once a month, um, I would love to do it once a month, and that is currently my plan and my goal. I think it's really, really important, so your question was, what would I do different? Yeah, I think it's really important, not only to be engaged and active and proximate and attentive to the community. But also communicate with the community what's going on.
That's business, so that's always a problem, people feel like they can't either, I can't reach my district representative, or. I don't feel like my, my concern is going on deaf ears, so, and making yourself. Are you gonna do any meeting greets where anybody can come to some of your meeting greets, and get to know you in one-on-one if they got any questions?
Yep, yes. I have some scheduled, um, and then some.
If you drop them in the chat, like, I'll probably just drop them in the chat, so if anybody would come and like, actually, listen, do not be coming being rude. Because Anna is doing some rounds, we're not gonna do that, and that we're not, because she is a pillar to the community. And she stands on business, I know this firsthand from just dealing with people that, that came across her through Charlotte Works, wanting to get trained. C D L training, so if it was an issue or concern, she's never not listened to anything that I said, and she's never not fixed or corrected issue. If there was one that needed to be corrected or addressed the issue, so, and she's helped a multitude of different people. So if you go to any of the meeting greets, please be humble, ask your questions, but have respect, that's just keeping it real. But, you know, I'm just saying, but, um.
But I can handle feedback, you know, I can, so if you have challenges, concerns, difficult things to share, like, I'm not afraid of. Of those types of conversations, um, and if you follow me on social media, and I'll also try to get Nico involved and engaged in it. But if you follow me on social media, you'll see, anytime I have something coming up, it'll be shared, so that you can come, you can show up, you can participate. Um, but I definitely will stay active and engaged, especially in the CS, there are a couple of current school board members who. Um, after school board meetings, within a couple of days, they share, like, you know, the bullet points from the meeting, what was discussed, what was decided, and I think that's amazing. That's really important to be.
Let's make them know what's going on in mind, yeah.
Yeah, it's your taxes, absolutely, absolutely, and it's important, it is really important for our schools to be as strong as possible.
All schools.
All schools, no matter the. Yep, no matter district, yep, yeah.
So, she's gonna drop some information in the chat, um, so y'all can come up for some of that meeting greet, she's also gonna tell you where you can follow. Well, you can go ahead and let them know how, well, you already gave you a website.
London for Education, I think somebody said something, let me see, that, oh yeah, okay, yeah, London for Education. And then London for education dot com is my website, yep.
And so we're gonna get that, we're gonna drop that information in the chat, so you don't get confused and go looking up London Bridge.
There you go.
Yes.
And this is my entire platform.
Just in case, you can scan her QR code, you'll see it right there, there's any information that you want. You can scan that QR code, and you can find out more details, and I will actually take a picture, and I will have it in the chat as well, and she's gonna drop the stuff.
Cool.
So, y'all, stay tuned, go out, be a phone, get engaged, each one people, that's right, six, six, go vote. Don't slip, change, grow.
Do your homework, yeah, do your homework, be an informed voter, and go out and vote, so many people don't vote during these off years. When there's not a president on the ballot.
Yeah, they think it's not important.
But local politics matter.
I stress that so.
Local politics matter, so go vote, do your research and go vote, and reach out to me.
And when we say do your research, find out what your current representatives have done. Big thing, what is their report card looking like, find out what they've accomplished.
Yes.
So with that being said and done, we're gonna close out this first, uh, second, and, uh, third, and gonna be some more. Try to find some takes one on one, we just keep y'all on the phone, some grounds, ears to the street, uh, make sure you share this. If anybody in D six, go vote, go vote, it is important. If anybody in D six, go vote, go vote, it is important.
District six.
District six.
Okay, so y'all know what it is, we gonna be in, we gonna be out.
Yes, yes, yes.
Y'all, I'm saying bye.